Are you ready is the question?
Yes.
It's getting there.
You're on.
All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's Board of Selectment meeting, Monday, August 20th, 2018. You'll all rise and join me for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming tonight. I'd like to open this meeting by recognizing one of our fallen heroes, Mr. Jack Calligan, 85, passed away on Sunday, August 21st, August 12th, I'm sorry, of this year. He was a decorated Korean War hero with purple hearts and four bronze stars. So if we could just have a moment of silence to recognize his passing, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Today will begin, as I see there's no public comments, we'll jump right into the approval warrants. So can I get a motion to approve payroll warrant 19-07 in the amount of $153,433.92?
Seconded.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant 19-07 in the amount of $610,660.73, which breaks down as follows. Town: $115,613. Water and sewer: $72,786.22. Payroll withholding: $6,219.82. Light bills: $397,970.67. Grants and revolving account: $18,071.2.
Seconded.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along, we have appointments. We have the appointment of Ms. Rebecca Oldham, town planner, as Groveland's primary commissioner to the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission effective September 4th, 2018.
I'll make the motion that we appoint Rebecca Oldham as primary commissioner to the MVPC effective September 4th, 2018.
Seconded.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, we have appointment of Mr. Robert Arkalian, planning board member, as Groveland's alternate commissioner to the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission effective September 4th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to appoint Robert Arkalian, planning board member, Groveland's alternate commissioner to the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission effective September 4th, 2018.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Who's the...
Primary.
The primary will be Ms. Oldham?
Yes, so Bob has been the alternate for 20 years, stepped in to be the primary commissioner when that position became vacant by a previous board member. He's looking to go back to just the alternate. So Rebecca will be the primary, and if she can't make a meeting, he would attend.
Well, as town planner, that fits right into her bellywreck, right?
Correct.
So that's great, okay. All those in favor?
Yep.
Okay, moving right along, we have appointment of one of the following two candidates to Groveland Housing Authority effective August 20th, 2018 until the next annual election, which would be May 6th, 2019. This is to replace Linda Anderson, who resigned June 29th, 2018. Candidate one is Sharon Ann Grant of 111 River Pines Drive, Groveland. And candidate two is Inger Burke, 409 River Pines Drive, Groveland. Not sure where we go from here. Is either candidate in the building? And would you mind stepping to the podium and introducing yourself to us?
I'm Inger Burke, and I'm 409 River Pines Drive, Groveland. And...
You don't have to be shy. Nobody's gonna bite your head.
I believe I'd be the better candidate because I'm trying to be more involved with the residents. I'm in the residents council that we're trying to form and be more active, being with the residents and trying to find out more of what the residents would like. So in turn, trying to be more of a voice for the residents. In turn, I think, in regards to the other candidate, I don't see her being active at all in where she has been. I don't wanna knock her butt. So I'm trying to be more active and be more of a voice.
Yes.
Yes. Didn't you pull papers?
Did I what? I'm sorry.
Didn't you pull papers for the election a year or two ago to run for that position?
Yes.
I think it was just this past May.
This past May?
This past year, yes.
So you've been actively interested in this role for a while then?
Yes, yeah. I ran against Linda, yeah.
And I will say, I did leave Sharon Grant a message and asked her to call me back to attend this evening. I did not hear back from her.
Is Ms. Grant in the audience? Okay, we'll get to you.
No, she is not Ms. Grant.
Oh, oh.
You're not Sharon Grant.
Oh.
She would just like to speak.
I'm good.
Salkin Watson, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Do we wanna listen to the other side talk?
Comment. Comment. Based upon the fact that Sharon Grant isn't here, and obviously she knew about it, doesn't look like she's that interested in the position. Inger Burke, she ran. She was a runner-up. And there's a list of names here that submitted by, in support of her from the residents. And this individual has to be a resident over there. And, but Sharon Grant signed the petition for Inger Burke to be appointed. So based upon all those facts and the fact that she's not here, I'd move that we appoint Inger Burke.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion on the matter? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You brought a gallery with you.
Good luck. Do a good job, I guess there's a lot of people counting on you.
Yes.
It's effective August 20th, 2018, Ms. Osborne. That was the motion. That would be today. We can wait till tomorrow if you'd like. It's only a couple of hours.
That's until the next election on May 6th, 2019.
Correct.
So you could actually stop by the town clerk if you wanted while she's open tonight to be sworn in. And we could just follow it up with an appointment letter for her.
Terrific. Okay, discussion impossible, but we have a clarification of the fees increase, which I guess we didn't really clarify that very well.
That's okay, I just had some questions on the votes you took at your last meeting. So the annual liquor licenses, I'm assuming, will be effective with the 2019 permits. Same thing with the common victorler, the class-two auto, and the boat ramp and moorings. The demand fees that you voted to increase actually requires a town meeting vote, so I will take your authorization to increase them as a motion to write up a warrant article, but that actually cannot go into effect until our next town meeting. And then the other ones, I wanted to know when you wanted to make them effective. So you changed the one-day liquor license, an application fee for liquor license, birth, marriage, death certificates, and dog licenses. When would you like to make those effective? Is it immediately? Is it a January 1st? What are your thoughts on that?
Haven't... Go ahead. Haven't most of those already been applied for and paid? Those, some of those fees?
Well, birth, marriage, and death is...
Ongoing, right. But any of the other ones?
No, one-day liquor license would be whenever there happens to be a request for one.
But the annual liquor license have already...
Right, so I'm assuming those are all... The annual things, I'm assuming, will be for 2019, when the next cycle comes around for them.
But the ongoing ones could...
So it's really a matter of when you want them to take effect? If you wanted it right away, if you wanted it to be like a January 1st start?
Well, I'll make a motion right now that the annual liquor license take effect at the next renewal, which would be January 1st, 2019?
Yes, so the liquor license, the common victorler, the class-two auto, and the boat ramps would all be with the 2019 renewals.
Okay, so I'll include those in my motion?
Yes, please.
You get that?
Yeah. I'm just waiting for a second.
Oh, I thought you were gonna remotion it.
Oh, you want me to remotion it to make the liquor license, liquor, one-day liquor license, liquor application fee, and the common victorler license? Is there one more?
So the annual liquor license, the common victorler, the class-two auto, and the boat ramp moorings would be the four that would be with the next annual cycle, which will be sometime after January 1st.
Okay, so the motion...
So that's the first group.
Right. So that would be the motion.
Yes.
Annual liquor license, common victorler, class-two auto, and boat ramp moor.
Yes, correct.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Okay, the one day and the application fee, I would...
And then the birth certificate, marriage certificate, death certificate, and dog license.
Just make those January 1st as well?
Well, I suppose we could, this way you give a chance to the public to ease in. If you wanna make it immediate, then I'll drop off the extra five bucks. I think for no one today, he's learned his premise, so...
Well, we couldn't do it immediate today. We would have to give some notice. So I would say either pick the start of the month or a January 1st start. Whatever you prefer.
I would motion for January 1st.
We'll make a motion.
What is it, dog license, marriage license, death?
One-day liquor license, birth, marriage, death certificates, and dog license. So really, you're just voting that they're all January 1st?
Yeah, I'll second that, it sounds reasonable.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great.
Thank you. And then the demand fee, I will just write up as a town meeting article. We'll present that at the next town meeting.
The motion on that was only an increase of like $5, right?
Yes, I will say, so just a point of information, one of the reasons why, when it was increased from five, it went to 15, is under mass state law, as the tax collector, that's the most that I could waive on any bill, is $15. So if someone had a demand fee applied in error, we could still waive it legally as 15. If you increase that to 20, the maximum is 30, we could then not legally waive it if it was in error. So that's one of the reasons why it was 15. A lot of communities have gone up to the maximum at 30 and just dealt with it as far as the requirements go. But you voted to go from 15 to 20.
We could still waive 15 to 20, right?
You can only waive up to 15.
But we could still waive 15 to 20 if that was in error?
Oh, yes, yes. So we have time, like I said. I can write it up for the town meeting, and you guys can think about it before we actually put it on the warrant if you want to change that or keep... But that does require town meeting approval.
All righty. Moving right along, we have discussion of state's bond bill.
Yeah, so on this one, I've been waiting for more information from Senator Tarr's office. The Senator and Representative Mira were scheduled to come to your board meeting in mid-September, but they've rescheduled for a later meeting. However, I was told that this board will need to vote in September to support one of the two projects before the state included in their bond bill. One of which is $1.5 million towards a new senior center. One is, and I'm not sure on the amount, but one is the Groveland Elm Square project.
Okay, but...
I haven't gotten a call back from the state, so I don't know what they've included in there for that. I was hoping to have the information to at least start a discussion. But just, so at this point, all I have is just keep in mind that you will have to decide as a board which one of the two you'd like the Senator and the Representative to request funding for. I should have information at least for the fourth meeting, and then we'll have to schedule a vote if they need it by the end of September for your September 17th meeting, I believe. Yep, the 17th. So those are the two projects before them, and they need the town to support one of the two. I asked if there's a way we can support both, but I haven't heard back. I sent them a list of the questions that we need, but I haven't heard back from them.
That was an email that came from me, right?
Came, we got several different... But yes, you got one, and then while I was on vacation, we got an invitation to a meeting through Caitlin. And then I followed up with AJ and the Senator directly. I emailed him to try and get information, and I left them a voicemail, but I haven't heard back.
When I talked to him, they wanted one.
Yes, that's what it seems like.
I don't know that you can actually put forward two. I did kinda give him a couple of other options as well, but they kinda went with those two.
Yeah.
So it probably would take a whole board to determine which one we want to prioritize. And it would also, probably part of that, from my perspective, would be what the total cost would be for each project. You know, does $1.5 million go further towards a senior center? Does $1.5 million go further towards the town square project?
We don't know it's gonna be $1.5 million.
Well, I mean, that's the most...
It's about a third of that.
Probably.
Right, well, and I think there's still some question is, you know, is it only for a brand-new senior center? Can it be used as an addition for a senior center? Like, I was trying to get questions on that, like what could the money be used for? But again, I just don't have the answers. But when they canceled the 17th, we were told that the board's gonna have to vote on the 17th to support one of those, given their timeline. So I'll get as much information, I'll send it to you in advance as soon as I hear back from them on what, you know, more information on those two options, but that's how it's been relayed to me thus far.
Could you also ask, if I don't talk to them, or we don't talk to them beforehand, if we put one forward, say we put the senior center forward, and then it's determined that we're gonna get a maximum of $500,000, can we change it and put it towards the town center? Probably not, but it'd be good to know that question, too.
Okay.
You know, 'cause $500,000 isn't gonna go very far towards a three-and-a-half-million-dollar project. Versus $500,000 to clean up the downtown area might cover half of it.
Yep, I'll ask.
I'm a friendly guy, want my cake and eat it two generation. Is, can we have one this year and one next year?
I don't know, I can ask.
What's the worst they can say is no? How many times have we heard no before in our lives, right? But you never know. Sometimes the answer will be yes, and it'll surprise us. Then we can have everything.
I think it may be beneficial to either reach out to the Elm Square Committee and the senior center or the Council on Aging to find out where things stand with either one of them, because I don't even know... The Elm Square Committee, we haven't heard anything. I was hoping Lisa would be here tonight. I don't know where they are, I don't know what discussions they've had.
Yeah, two weeks ago, I don't think they've met in some time. So I don't know where that project, if it died of loneliness, or...
I mean, I know they've had a Realtor come in and look for it on behalf of the owner of the property, so I don't even know if it's still a viable option. I haven't heard otherwise. And then the same thing with the Council on Aging.
I think the latest status with that was the owner was waiting for some kind of written offer. And she wasn't interested in entertaining anything until there was some kind of written offer. So you could put a written offer together for 25 grand and say, "This is our offer," and see what happens. But until there's something in writing, then it's probably not gonna go very far with her.
Right, but they're probably sat there like that for how many years now?
Right, 10 years.
I don't know if anybody's in a big rush.
No.
Salkin Watson, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
I mean, if we're getting $1.5 million for senior center, I mean, to me, if that's a slam dunk, I'd rather see you go through with that than...
If you get all of it, probably, yeah.
We've mostly dealt with that ISOR in the middle of town for a number of years. We don't have a senior center.
Right.
I mean, I think, I think we could live with ISOR for a couple, few more years and get a senior center instead. I mean, that'd be my take, I'm not...
Maybe not a standalone, maybe some kind of addition under this building, but...
Listen, at $1.5 million, this is a lot of money. There's nothing to sneeze at. That goes a long way. I mean, that's a third of the project cost, what was originally proposed. If we can cut some corners and conagle some things and get some other people on board, that might be half of the project cost, maybe more. So we'll follow up with that.
Yes, so I'll get more information, and I will get it to you as soon as I can. Like I said, the last communication I got was an email saying this board will have to vote in September to support one of the projects. So I'll let you know as soon as I hear.
See, see me on the emails?
Sure.
Sometimes squeaky wheels get grease.
No, I don't think it's that, yeah. I just think it's just a crazy time of year. They're on break, and they're not... I'm sure it's not just that they're not responding to me. I'm sure they have other things going on. They usually get right back to me.
They're on break. Kind of break. Who's on break?
The state. They've taken their little recess for the last two weeks of the summer.
Aren't they lucky? Did you get a break this year? I didn't get a break.
I went on vacation.
Did you get a break this year?
Absolutely.
You got a break, I didn't get a break.
We should vote ourselves a break.
I'm in the wrong business. Geez, Christmas.
Sounds to me like you chose the wrong career path.
You're not kidding. My mother told me I should've been a dentist, I don't know. I'm wondering if she wasn't right. Okay, so let's move right along. We'll get to the updates on past projects. We've got some CPA projects out there that, hanging out there for a little while. I wonder if we can get an update on status and where we are with them.
Yes, so I actually wanted to update you on the capital projects first. These are Bill's requests, and he's not here tonight. But just to bring you up to date. So the capital projects from this past May's town meeting, the highway radios, it just under 20,000. Those have been purchased, waiting on the radio system work to be completed that falls under the fire department category.
And timeline for that?
Well, so the, there was a little hangup with the type of repeater that was to be ordered. They've worked through that. So they've given the all, they've given Alcom the go-ahead. They were supposed to start work either the end of last week or this week. So that should be wrapping up soon. I don't think that's a long project.
So can we say the ETA on that is by our next meeting, September 4th? I don't want to forget about these things. Is what happens is, we forget. Some of them get done, some of them don't get done, some linger on forever.
Yeah, I don't forget. I stay on top of all these. So I'll let you know.
You're better than I am, though.
Well, I have to, I have to track the funding, so... I'll let you know in the next meeting, but I don't know how long it's gonna take, but it's underway. The police radios were purchased and have already been issued to all the officers. The police cruiser has been ordered. The build date is actually today, with the delivery date for the design and radio work is September 10th, that week. And the fire EMS vehicle has been ordered, and they are expecting delivery around Thanksgiving. They're thinking probably the first week in December, but they will receive it turnkey. Everything is coming equipped, unlike the police car that has to go for equipment. Theirs will be fully equipped. So those are the capital projects from this past year.
And what was the ETA on the cruiser?
The police cruiser?
Yeah.
The week of September 10th is when it's going to be equipped. So I don't know how long it takes there with the radios and stuff, but...
They'll say September 30th.
Yeah, probably the end of the month. Then regarding the CPA, I'll go through some of them quick. Mike wants to touch base on the four that he oversees, so I'll skip those. The Groveland Community Trail is still actively underway. So we, it's been a little quiet right now, just because our funding was pushed off under the Merrimack Valley Planning and DOT project timeline, but we're still scheduled for advertising. We're hoping October of 2019 to get that built. The restoration of the Riverview Cemetery...
Can we, how much money has been spent to date on that? How much money is left to spend?
The Community Trail's sort of a rolling project because we did it in three different phases. But to date, we've spent And we have appropriated $355,000.
Okay, so we've got the...
$80,000.
We have $85,000 left, yep. Okay.
Is that gonna be enough?
The majority of the, the rest of the money, most of it will come from the state. So I don't know how much more we will need to contribute, but the majority of the funding is state-funded.
Okay.
Restoration of the Riverview Cemetery was a $75,000 allocation in 2015, and they spent $71,000 and turned back just over $3,000 as unspent to do the restoration up there of the front of the cemetery. The masonry work, they put some trees in, they did some landscaping.
So is that project done now?
That is closed, yep, that's expired. The restoration of the library documents was $51,000 from the 2015 town meeting. They spent $44,000 and change and turned back $6,300 when the project closed out on June 30th. And they did all of their archival, they did shelving systems, and they bought stuff to really store their materials and document it.
So that's complete, too?
That is complete. The revitalization of the pines was a total of $360,000, $143,000 for the boat ramp, and $217,000 for the fields. The Fields project has spent $91,000 to date, leaving $125,000. The boat ramp project is obviously complete.
They come in on budget?
It came in just under, we turned back $4,300.
And they've spent only $91 to date?
Yes, and that expires June 30th of 19, unless it's extended.
And there are a few things left on that project, right?
Well, so right now, we're working on, I got the specs on Friday for the irrigation system to pull from the river. We have to put that out to obtain quotes. So I actually just sent that, I rewrote it and put the legal requirements and sent it off to my coet and to review. But that'll come in around $30,000 to $40,000 for that. And then I believe the remainder of the money, they wanted to re-seed the field and then put a fence up. And that was gonna take the majority of the money in this phase.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I've got, $217 for the fields, they spent $91 to date. That leaves 126 remaining that you were gonna spend, let's say I give you 40 for the pump, that gives me 86 left. It's gonna cost 86 for fencing and seeding?
I believe that's what he told me, that was what was left on his list, unless I missed something.
Oh, that's what's left on his list?
I thought he said that that was gonna use most of what was left of the money. So I don't know the cost of either, I haven't seen any other projects they wanna do. That was just in a conversation with Mike.
It seems like an awful, $86,000 seems like an awful lot of money to seed and a fence.
How big's the fence?
Honestly, I have no idea. It was just a basic conversation. I don't, I haven't seen any specs, I don't really know what they're requesting.
Sounds like a down payment on a border wall.
Well, I'm assuming that it's chain length like everything else down there.
I'm assuming so, but I don't know if they're doing the fields, I really don't know. It was just, like I said, we haven't really discussed the funds other than that's what he told me he was doing, we haven't really discussed the funds other than that's what he told me he was doing and he thought it was gonna take most of the money for the last few projects, so.
The returned money, that goes back into the general fund?
No, it goes back to the CPA bucket to be reallocated.
Is there any way we can get them to come in and give us, you know, like a project timeline? Like, I'm looking for something like this. It'd have the item and then kind of, you know, the, the June, July, whatever the months are on top, and then, you know, blacked in, you know, colored in and say, okay, this is, this item will be done August. This item will be done September. This item will be done October next year. So that we have some kind of game plan as to completion of this whole thing. You said it started in, this started in two thousand, they got the three sixty in what year?
It was like November of fifteen. It was a special town meeting, but they didn't spend money on their project until, I think, twenty-seventeen. So they had almost a full year, I think, before they spent any money on the field side of things. It was all boat ramp up until that point.
Yeah, I just wanna try to get somebody to put something down on paper and then, I, I guess if you don't have a map, you'll never reach your destination. You know what I mean? I'd like to see some kind of roadmap or some kind of plan. Usually if you have one, it kinda forces you to, you know, check off things. Yeah, stick to it. You know, you have a punch list. You kinda go down and you knock things off and you know where you're going. More importantly, we know where they're going and we know what's left to be done, estimated timelines, so that we can kinda follow this project through.
Yeah, I can certainly ask them. I honestly don't know what they have. I just know he tells me this is the next project and I put it out to bid. I think a lot of it has been, we put the well in a year ago. That didn't produce the water. Then they changed focus to now do the river. It's just things, they did the fields, they did the, you know, all of that, and now the whole irrigation system with the rivers taking longer than they planned. They wanted to have it out well before now, so. I don't know what, I don't know how realistic their timeline is given the bidding requirements and the project delays, so I can ask them.
Yeah, just me, I tend to be task-oriented. I, I'd just like to see those things so I know they're getting knocked off and things are moving forward as opposed to just stagnating. And then people forget and people pass away. They move and nothing ever gets done.
The historical document preservation that was done with the town clerk's office, that was for forty-two thousand dollars. We've spent twenty-two thousand dollars. I spoke to Mike about it. We've spoken in the past and we spoke again today that he's gonna show me the software and what the capability is to see if we can expand it and maybe obtain other licenses and use it elsewhere in town hall for people that need to preserve documents by scanning them and archiving them.
So they've got twenty thousand left on that?
Correct.
Do they think that'll chew up the rest of it?
I don't know. I don't even know what a license is, a license costs, so I'm not really sure until Mike and I really spend some time discussing it. The historic property survey with the historical commission is closed out. That was a twelve thousand dollar project. It was a matching grant from the state, so that's been finalized. The cemetery document management software was eighteen thousand, five hundred. They have spent twelve thousand and change. I just ordered a new computer for the cemetery office. That will come out of this. I'm not sure what else they plan to do with this, with these funds. So that's where it stands right now. The cemetery old burying ground restoration was, was approved at the 2017 annual town meeting for forty-eight thousand dollars. We have not spent anything, and I'll be honest, I'm not sure that will get done with Bob Guptill leaving. So that project may, unless they decide to undertake that project, I think that might close out and wait for another time for them to get on board with that.
Cemetery commissioners just don't have the bandwidth right now to take that on. Is that what it is?
Now that we have a new form and maybe they will, they can reprioritize. But right now they're handling so much of the day-to-day administration up there. It's just not even on their focus.
Right. It's just over, overtaxing their resources, I see.
Yep. Cemetery veterans marker restoration was eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. They've spent sixty-eight hundred dollars, and I just purchased the last four Korean War markers for them. Small money, a couple hundred bucks. I think that may then close out that project unless there are other markers that they need, but that should be closing out soon. The veto museum at the 2017 annual town meeting for fifty-five thousand dollars. We have not spent anything on that.
What year?
Twenty-seventeen.
Why not?
And then the three projects.
So who's gonna?
Just because you glossed over doesn't mean we don't want an answer. Why not?
It's not in my hands anymore. I don't know.
Who's heading up that project?
Claire Walsh.
So there's fifty-five thousand appropriated to that, and we haven't done anything with it in a year and a half?
No, after the last town meeting, I believe, the fire department wanted to get involved again, even after we had that discussion on town meeting floor. So I think she was working with them, but nothing's happened.
Can we possibly ask her to come in then and figure out where we're going with this?
Why is that costing so much?
To be honest with you, I don't think there was a plan for this fifty-five thousand. I think they just picked a number to see what they could get done with it. Because there's so much that people wanna do and there's ideas and there's lights and cabinets and.
Roughly how much?
There's a perfect example. There's no roadmap. There's no plan, so you're never gonna get there.
Well, 'cause I think initially some people really wanted to use that money to restore the veto itself and get that taken care of before they restored the room, and then some people wanted to deal with the room and not the veto. I, I don't, I honestly don't know. We did with the first phase of money, the thirty-eight thousand that we got. I did carpeting, painting, lights, heat and AC. So I don't know what the rest of this money will cover. I honestly don't.
How much have we spent on the veto roughly?
Well, that was like thirty-eight thousand.
That was, that's it so far? And now they wanna spend another fifty-five thousand on it?
Yes.
So we're gonna a hundred thousand dollars into this thing?
Well, right now, no.
Does anybody go and look at the veto? Does anybody know where the veto is? We should take a poll and see if people know where the veto is, or what it is. Can we donate it to a museum? Get it off our books? Put that money towards something, you know, of use?
It was in a museum. It came back here for one of the town parades and celebrations, and they raised money to build a spot for it to stay here.
That nobody visits?
The sister veto person came to visit it. He lives up in Maine and he has the sister veto. He came down to visit it.
He can have it.
So I don't know. I don't know what's going on with it. I haven't heard anything. In the very beginning, Claire came in, we talked. She looked at the room. That was the last I've heard or seen of it, so I have no idea.
It sounds like we need an update from, from her.
Yeah, I can ask her to come in.
Sure. Just put it in my garage. I charge the town a hundred bucks.
The, and then we, so we'll, we'll go back to the projects Mike has, but then the three that were appropriated at town meeting this past year, the updating the open space and recreation plan for thirty thousand. As you know, twenty thousand of that is going to the new planner's salary with the remaining ten for her to use in Merrimack Valley planning resources to get that plan updated and done. So that should be taken care of actually this fiscal year, I would assume. Window control and parking lot improvements of Washington Hall for twenty-four thousand dollars. I haven't heard anything on that project, so I'm not sure where that stands.
Who can tell us?
Claire Walsh.
What was that? Window what?
Control. They were gonna do UV protection on the windows.
And parking?
And parking lot improvements.
So, okay, so maybe we can have her speak to this, two things?
Yep. And then the, the four that Mike will talk about will be the roadway improvements to VZ Park, the Johnson's Pond Management Plan, the Johnson's Pond Weed Removal, and the VZ Restoration.
You have quite a bit on your plate there, Mr. Dempsey.
Yes, and I've been quite busy for the last couple of months because a lot of these things have been ongoing and started. So the, the first one I'll discuss briefly is the Johnson's Pond improvements. The plan was to, twofold, to do some water quality measurements in the pond and also do a hydro raking project to remove some of the water lilies that are starting to clog up the pond. So the, some of the funds were allocated towards the Johnson's Creek Management Plan, and so I'll discuss that in a minute, but as far as removing the weeds and lilies, we also received a matching grant from the state, thanks to Senator Tar and Representative Mira for that. That was fifty thousand dollars, so that enabled us to be able to complete the project and also do some maintenance work in the future if we need to do that. We just started it last week. The company had us on their list. They're pretty busy. So they came and thanks to the Groveland Highway Department, who is currently hauling away the material that's removed, bringing it to the town compost facility, and also thanks to Kendall Construction, who has loaned us a large tractor in order to load up the dump truck with the material. Will probably be done with the 2018 portion of the project in about a month.
What, how much was, did you, was allocated to that project?
That was a.
That's the weed removal?
Yes.
Sixty thousand, five hundred.
Sixty thousand, five hundred, right.
And spent to date?
Eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
And you have a fifty-five thousand dollar matching grant?
Fifty thousand, yeah. And that's all been spent. That was, that paid for the company's work to do the weed removal this year.
How much weed are we talking about?
How much weed?
How much, how many truckloads? I mean.
Control that conversation.
They expect to remove, I think.
That's a lot of money to remove weeds, right?
Hundreds of cubic yards, hundreds of cubic yards of the material.
Yeah, they really wanted like the highway open.
Tracks? Tracks?
Like a paddle, like a paddle wheel.
Hundreds of cubic yards of weeds?
Yeah, so they had originally asked if the highway could open, like have someone there every single day, 'cause they were just gonna be dumping off truckloads. So there's a lot of weeds to dispose of.
Now, is that stuff just gonna die in the compost, or is it gonna actually grow there too?
No, it, it's water lilies mostly, so yeah.
It seems like it's a lot of money to spend to remove weeds.
It, it's, it's not cheap to do this kind of thing. This, the, the three alternatives were to put chemicals in the pond or to do the hydro raking, and if you don't do the hydro raking sooner or later, then you have to dredge, which is a lot more expensive. So this is, we're actually, according to the company, we're doing it at a good time because it, it's doable to clean it up. It hasn't gone beyond the point of being a lot of sediment on the bottom of the pond from the weeds.
Is that every day they're working on that?
Yeah.
What side are they on now?
They're right at, they're gonna continue. Most of the work they'll do is right at the bottom of Johnson's Pond on Washington Street.
Right at VZ.
All right. I'll swing by if I can.
Yeah, look at it. It's interesting.
Are they gonna take all the lily pads out of there? Are they gonna go all the way out to the point?
Yes, that's, the goal is to do, that, that's about eight acres. And then there's some along the shore that they may do, but it's kinda, we have contracted to do, I think, twenty-three workdays or whatever they can do in twenty-three workdays.
When I saw that today, it, it looked like they were, when they're taking the, the weeds out of there. They, they're going deeper in the pond? So it'll be a little bit deeper?
Oh, no. But we did raise the, the pond is at the highest level it can be right now. And hopefully that also will stem future growth of anything.
Now, now this, you, just refresh my memory. What, what do you call that? Hydro what?
Hydro raking.
And, and how long is that supposed to last?
Well, according to the people I've spoken to, you know, usually what happens is they clean out a pond. They may have to do another year of some maintenance of some areas where they didn't quite catch it enough. And then it's an ongoing thing. There's a number of ways to do the ongoing. You can, you can just hire them every couple of years to come back and clean up any spots where it comes back. You can use, there's some chemicals that you can put in the water that are not herbicides. They're chemical treatments that discourage it. And then, again, you know, things like increasing the depth and reducing fertilizer use around the pond, failed septic systems around the pond, those kind of things will help prevent future growth. So, you know, it, it's like if you look up any pond, they're, they require maintenance.
Is this a native plant or is it invasive?
Yeah, it's water lily. No, it's not invasive. It's mostly water lilies.
Regarding this, this project?
Yes.
The highway department's doing some hauling for you?
Yes.
Was that planned?
Yes.
So they had known that it was on their schedule all along that they were gonna do it?
Yes, except that we didn't know exactly when they were going to come. And plus, we didn't, we didn't really totally know how it was gonna work, because we've never seen it before.
But it's, it's been on their radar. This isn't totally unexpected, so an extra burden is what I'm at.
Yes, right. And they've been very, very helpful.
And was there any particular care taken to make sure that no frogs or turtles were harmed in the raking, hydro raking or anything?
Yes, well, I'm sure there's some of that, but we had to go through, it took us over a year to get the permits in order to do it, so. We, I mean, we had to spend, I don't remember how much, but about over ten thousand dollars to get the permits.
Crazy sometimes, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, that's the business we're in, so if we don't get the permits, then this doesn't look good for us.
Ten thousand, four hundred.
Yeah, right. So that was Johnson's Pond. The, the other Johnson's Creek Management Plan, that was eighty? Eighty-five thousand allocated to that.
Oh, Mike, you've got about forty-eight, forty-nine thousand left on the Johnson Pond improvement. Is that gonna be enough to complete your project?
Well, yes. I'm expecting we're gonna have to spend a little bit more money on hauling the materials out of there to supplement what the town is doing for us, and also the rest of the will be used for maintenance in 2019.
So you expect to be right on budget?
Oh, yes, yes. Well, we're not gonna go over, right?
Okay.
We're gonna do whatever we can do with the funds available.
All right, great.
The Johnson's Creek Management Plan, we hired Cameron Engineering. They started to perform the study in the spring. They're doing water quality measurements in the pond. They're inventorying plants in the pond and working from the pond all the way down to the Merrimack River. We expect that report to be completed in December when the study is completed. And the, this one was important because Mass DEP won't let us, won't let the highway department or us do any work along the creek from Johnson's Pond all the way down to the Merrimack River until we have a report like this that says what needs to be done and why. So for instance, there's some flow controls that need to be fixed on Old Mill Pond, which is a little bit further down past Salem Street and Mill Street Extension, and they won't let us do those until, they won't let the highway department fix those things until we've got this plan done, so.
So is it just our highway department or is it, nobody can fix these things until this plan is done?
Nobody. We, we can't hire somebody to do it, nothing. They won't let us grant a permit to do it.
Can we do it at night when nobody's watching?
Unfortunately, no. We tried to do that, but.
Just asking.
No, we, we actually, the highway department filed to do it. Somebody. Somebody, somebody appealed the permit, so that's where this, that's why we ended up at this, and DEP's decision was you gotta do these, these studies, so.
So, Mr. Watson, you had a question?
Mike, is a long-range plan to do something with the old swimming pool, the old swimming hole at the, the New Mill Pond?
Yes, that's a possibility. You know, this is something for us to think about sometime in the next few years. They, they will give us some information on what we could potentially do there. It's, this is behind the, the water, current water department maintenance building on Washington Street. That's where Mill Pond used, called New Mill Pond, used to be. And it was abandoned sometime in the nineties, and the water all let out of it. It's all grown in now, but potentially could be re-flooded and turned into a swimming hole like it had been for many years.
Now, what, this study, does the study also do anything with the wildlife that's, that's out there, there's quite a bit at, at the New Mill Pond?
Yeah, well, right, some of that is turtle habitat now, and so, that's a consideration. I think what this study will tell us is, you know, if, if they look at it that this is habitat, then you've gotta get the permits before you could, you know, move forward with changing that area.
And how much was that total?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
Some of that is being paid for from the previous project, too.
But, in essence, we had to spend eighty-five thousand dollars for the state to tell us if it's okay to fix something that's broken?
Well, that's one of the things, but the report is going to tell us things like the water quality in Johnson's Pond, because people are questioning that, you know, whether there's lead and arsenic coming into it from Haverell, you know, is it supporting fish, or is it too polluted? The proper water level for the pond, and then also flow from that level all the way down to the Merrimack, if there was a hundred-year flood, you know, how prepared are we for that kind of event? So, besides being able to file the permits for fixing things, we are also gonna have a lot more scientific evidence in, in this report to base any things we decide to do in the future. So, it's, it's money well spent. You know, frankly, if it wasn't for the CPA, we wouldn't be able to do it. The third one we voted this year was the Beezy Park roadway improvements. Thanks again to the Groveland Highway Department, who helped us with the planning and some of the prep work and final work. We were able to get that completed in July. And so, for the first time in fifty years, we actually have a safe paved roadway and parking lots up at Beezy Park. So, take a look at that, if you haven't seen it, they did a really nice job.
I haven't, I'll definitely have to come by and take a look. And that was done on, edited and on time?
Yes. That was a hundred and six K on that one.
Spent all of it?
Yes. The last one, we voted to extend the conservation restrictions for three properties. The amount, twenty-four thousand dollars. So, there's three properties, two of them, conservation restrictions were going to be granted to the state Fish and Game, because they, at Meadow Pond, they already have a conservation restriction there, so they were gonna take over the restriction, put a restriction on our two properties that we purchased with CPA funds. So, that was a requirement that we have a CR on them. The state legislature voted, they had to do that in order for us to move forward, they approved that, the governor signed it this month, so that's all set. So, the remaining work is just on Fish and Game, to incorporate that into their database, and that will be done on those two properties. The third property is the remaining part of Town Forest. That's being worked on by Essex County Green Belt, they are gonna put the CR on that one. And I'm hoping that's gonna be done by next spring. They'll, I think the only cost, so the total cost out of the twenty-four K, I believe, we're only gonna end up spending about five thousand dollars for the Town Forest one. The other two didn't end up costing anything, because the state took those.
Right, so to date, we've only spent three hundred dollars in legal costs.
Yep. And that's it.
Good. Mr. Sleckman Wood, do you have any questions of our esteemed guest?
None of those.
Mr. Watson?
Yeah, just one, Mike. Through, through your, your explanation, when you use the CPA money you need to, for to purchase the land, you need to put a conservation restriction on it?
Yes.
So, I would assume that if, if it was purchased outside of CPA funds, then you wouldn't need a conservation restriction? If you, if you just went to the town meeting and said you need a hundred thousand for, for this particular piece of land, that you wouldn't need a conservation restriction on it?
Well, only if, like, for instance, the former busing property, okay? That was purchased by the town in 2014, 2015. We didn't use any CPA funds for, you know, we borrowed money to buy that property. That doesn't need a conservation restriction. We certainly could put a CR on part of it if we wanted to, and I think I discussed that with Bill off and on. Or we could choose not to, you know? But as long as we get certain grants, we use CPA funds, then you have to have a CR on it.
Okay, I'm all set.
I'll sit. Well, thank you, Mr. Dempsey, for your updates, I appreciate it, I'm sure the town appreciates it. We'll move right along then, we have discussion of fall special town meeting date. So, Denise, I'm sure you'll fill us in?
Well, in order to make any changes to the recreational marijuana bylaw, we would need to have a town meeting before the moratorium expires, which is December thirty-first. So, I mean, right now, I would recommend we look in November, either November fifth or November nineteenth. They're the two Mondays in November that are not Sleckman meeting nights. I don't have a finished bylaw based on what you all voted back from council yet, so. So, if you wanna wait until the full board is here, we can talk, it doesn't really matter, but we should pick one, and then at your next meeting, you could open up the warrant in case there's other business that people would like to submit, so that we have enough time to get things reviewed and on the warrant prior to a town meeting.
She's looking November fifth, and the other one is?
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth. November fifth is the day before Election Day.
Nineteenth works, nineteenth is a, is a better day.
Well, that's the week of Thanksgiving, isn't it? Or it's Thanksgiving the week after?
It's probably the week before Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving is early this year, I believe.
The fifth or the nineteenth?
It's the twenty-second.
I would say the fifth, 'cause I think the nineteenth, that might be away.
And the nineteenth is the day before the anniversary of Mexican Revolution.
No. Can't have that.
Yeah, that is Thanksgiving week, Thanksgiving is early that week.
I mean, you could do it on like one of your, well, you can't do the twelfth, because that's Veterans Day observed.
Right.
See, the nineteenth, I'm afraid you're gonna have a lot of people...
Traveling.
Traveling, that's a busy, busy week, and a lot of people work Monday, Tuesday, after Wednesday, and gunso, if they even work that week. The fifth...
Yes, although to Ed's point, the fifth will now be, the state's now requiring early voting, so the town clerk's office would be open till eight the night before for voting, so actually, that would not work.
Yeah. I can see it was Election Day the day, the day after, which I was gonna say it's gonna be problematic.
How about, you couldn't do it at the, at the meeting, on the twelfth?
The twelfth is Veterans Day observed.
So, you'd have to do the thirteenth?
Well, we don't normally have a Tuesday town meeting.
Can you move in October?
October, I just get nervous that, that might not give us enough time to, we need to have public hearings and with, with bylaws. I just wanna make sure we have enough time, if we're gonna open a warrant and have people submit articles, to get things...
Well, it's either gonna be late October or early December, I mean, those are our choices.
Unless you try to cram it down on, on November nineteenth, which I'm afraid you might not get a quorum at town either.
I mean, we could do a non-Mondays night, all of our signs and things already say like town meeting Monday, but we could do a non-Mondays night.
The third is too late?
Third of December, you mean?
No. December's fine, I just don't know what type of, I mean, I guess, I don't know what type of crowd we'll get in December.
You know, third of December's Hanukkah.
Is it?
Yeah.
All right, can't do that. I think you're looking October twenty-ninth, then, that's...
We can, we can use that as, that's also early voting, though.
It can begin sundown on the second. I just hate to trample on anybody's...
I will talk to Ann, 'cause she was gonna start, she was gonna be early voting that day as well.
The twenty-ninth?
Yeah. She was gonna go out, I think, a full week before, so that's when her early voting was gonna start.
The twenty-second, is, is that, now we're pushing it too far forward?
Yeah.
Ed, do you have any thoughts, on this area? It's a tough, tough, hard time of year here.
We really just need to have something voted before December thirty-first.
Christmas is seventeen weeks. Is there something that's gonna take, that's gonna take some time?
Are you asking, or are you telling me?
It's hard to anticipate.
She's, she's worried about getting everything together before the end of October, that's why she was looking at November, but November looks like, with early voting and then the week of Thanksgiving and all the other stuff, that that's not gonna get enough people to turn out for a quorum, which pushes us to early December, which pushes us into Hanukkah, so...
Right, so we need...
Why can't we go the week after Thanksgiving, Monday, this, November twenty-sixth?
We could, I guess that's the same quadrant as the nineteenth, like, it's Thanksgiving, it's the weekend after Thanksgiving, will people be here? I don't know.
And that's a regular meeting night, the twenty-sixth.
Is it?
So, we need two weeks prior, the warrants have to be posted fourteen days prior to a special town meeting. So, we need a public meet, public hearings before that, that have to be advertised, two weeks in a paper, before we can actually hold a public hearing. I'm just concerned that if we do it in October, we're gonna be very tight on that timeline, since our next meeting is already September.
Yeah.
So...
I know.
So, December third, I mean, oh, that's Hanukkah, we already said.
Would that be the, what, the tenth?
Yeah, but that must still be Hanukkah, right? How long is Hanukkah? Seven, eight crazy nights. So, when does Hanukkah start?
You just played the song in your head, didn't you?
What's the first night of Hanukkah?
Sunday.
It's Sunday, sun, begins sundown on December second.
So, wouldn't it end on the Monday, the following?
Probably.
What are you saying, Ed, the tenth? Is that what you suggested?
Tenth was a meeting night.
Tenth is a meeting night as well. Now, we're really into mid-December.
The tenth, I won't be here.
It ends, the, the Hanukkah ends Monday, December tenth, in the evening.
The tenth, I won't be here.
Sunday, December second to Monday, December tenth is Hanukkah.
But it's like Mr. Watson just pointed out, December tenth is a regular meeting, and now we're into, now you're into the holidays and potential weather issues.
Well, we could always plan for...
What, next week?
Like, the twenty-sixth or something, and, and either move the, no, November, and either make a Sleckman's meeting the next night, or we could just plan, work around it, and you could vote to have someone sign the warrants.
Yeah, we should do that.
Historically...
Selectman meeting, or...
Historically, that time of year, I mean, it's the tax classification, the annual licenses will come around, but we, those can be...
Town meetings at six thirty?
Those can probably be December tenth without any issue.
That's seven?
Seven, town meeting, usually it's seven, right?
Seven.
So, if we could do the Sleckman meeting at six o'clock that night, we could probably get through everything and then do town meeting right after? We did that in April, I think. We did a quick meeting beforehand.
Yes, but it wasn't a regular business meeting.
We push off the board Sleckman meeting one day. I mean, we're dealing with it, what I would call an unusual set of circumstances and timeframe. Labor Day's early, Thanksgiving is early, things are... Sleckman Watson, what are you, what are your thoughts? And do you care to share them with us?
Well, it looks like the best option would be the nineteenth of November. It's not a meeting night, even though it's, it's the weekend of Thanksgiving, the week of Thanksgiving, it is, it is on the Monday, Thanksgiving is, is on the Thursday, obviously. That looks like the, the better option. You don't wanna do it on the, on the fifth, day before election, early voting. Novem, October is, is a, is a tight month to get the paperwork done. The twelfth is a holiday, the twenty-sixth is a regular night. The third, Monday, the third, is, is a holiday or Hanukkah. The tenth is a Sleckman meeting, and now you're too far into the month of December.
You're well into holiday time at, at the next point.
I mean, I think people will show up for a topic such as recreational marijuana, but we just need a hundred.
Yeah, with that being such a short week, and a lot of people just go away that week, you know, they'll come...
I think you have a better option of getting people on the back end of it than on the front end of it.
Yeah, me too, on the twenty-sixth, because most of them will be back...
To go back to work anyways.
From the holiday vacation to go back to work. I know it's a, it's a board meeting, but maybe we can condense that board meeting on the twenty-sixth to meet. Like Sleckman Wood, it suggests that maybe an hour early that night, go right into town meeting. You think that might work?
Sure, as long as it's something short, as long as it's a short meeting.
Well, we'll try to keep the agenda as brief as possible that night, and just move through it as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you want, I can certainly put it on, 'cause you'll have to actually vote to open the agenda, so on your next meeting, we can put, you know, to open the town meeting agenda, and if you wanna bring it up with your other two board members and make sure that that date works before you do that, I could sort of leave it that if we wanna change the date, you could vote to change the date and open it all on the same night. That way, by the next meeting, we're opening town meeting regardless of whatever date you guys pick. Or if you wanna vote now, that's fine, too.
So, October, the twenty-ninth is a Sleckman meeting, the other Monday, the before that, the twenty-second, that's too early on October?
I think we're cutting it pretty close.
All right, so it doesn't leave many options.
And the twenty-ninth, she's, she's gonna start early voting, so that really doesn't work for us.
Now, does the fifth? Yeah, it looks like either, either the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth a regular meeting, move that, move the meeting up earlier, or the meeting after.
Well, we could start it early, and hopefully, we can get through it if there's any lingering issues, we could take it up...
Well, see if the, see if the other members ever have a conflict or, or anything on, on that particular day, see what their feelings are.
You control the agenda, so you can make it late.
Absolutely.
So, they, being on a, being on a regular meeting night, doesn't really matter.
No, I think we can get through it all. I think the twenty-sixth might work the best for, for most of the folks in town, taking consideration their life schedules. And then, can we make that tentative and, and just make sure the other two board members are in concurrence with our...
Yep.
Logic and reasoning behind this date?
Yep.
Is that good with you, Sleckman Watson?
Sure.
Good with you, Sleckman Wood?
Yes.
Terrific, democracy does work.
Okay.
Okay, move right along, I think that's, ends our discussion for that topic?
Yes.
So moving right along, we're looking to accept the resignation of Myron Lacy as library page effective August 24th, 2018.
Motion to accept the resignation of Myron Lacy as library page affected August 24th, 2018.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, any further discussion?
No, it looks like he's going back to college, so it's reasonable.
Is there a plan to replace said page anytime soon?
Yes, so I posted it this morning, but I do think Darcy has some ideas on a little bit of reorganization of the library. So she's working on that, and hopefully at the fourth meeting, she might have some information for you.
Oh, so we can expect her to come before and give us her plan?
If she's ready for it, yes. But she has some plans over there, but it is posted for now.
Well, I'd like to hear some of her plans, that's great, good, people are thinking. We have a motion is second, see if there's any further discussion, all those in favor?
Yep.
Terrific. Moving right along, we'll go into, and I hope you don't mind, I've been reading, it's always a dangerous thing. I'd like to change the old business title to old or unfinished business, because most of the old business is unfinished, right? If that's alright with everybody here?
Good for me.
So, we'll start with old or unfinished business. Selectman Watson, do you have any old or unfinished business?
I have none.
You have none? Selectman Wood, do you have any old or unfinished business you would like to discuss with us?
I don't think I have anything.
Okay. Old unfinished business. The, my favorite discussion.
The pines?
The toilet. Is there an ETA on the porcelain palace down there at the pines?
Well, I don't have a formal ETA. They are waiting on a plumbing inspection for the plumbing work. Once that is inspected and signed off on, they need to do the finish work and install the fixtures, so.
ETA, month, six months, six years?
I'm not gonna give you ETAs, cuz I don't know.
Can somebody give us an ETA?
It's really a matter of when we get the fixtures, when we got time to install them, when we get the plumbing inspection.
Who, who heads up all that?
The Highway Department.
The Highway Department.
They've got the hands full with stuff.
So they're the ones that are gonna actually install the fixtures, install the partitions.
Is it at all possible we can get somebody, I know this is a stretch here, at all possible we get somebody from the Highway Department to come before us and just give us like, a rough timeline, you know, somewhere?
Yeah, well, I'm sure by the next meeting, I'll have a rough timeline. We just don't know when the inspection will be, and we don't know when the fixtures are gonna be delivered, so until I know that, he's not gonna have any better timeline for you than I am, so.
Would've been great if we could've had Groveland Days and a ripping-cutting ceremony there.
We don't have a Groveland Days, so.
I know, it would've been, it would've been a grand feast there, I mean, we could've sold raffle tickets, who gets to go first?
Maybe the Pine Speedway, who knows?
Could make some money.
Yeah, and as I said to you, I think, Bill, you and I spoke, at some point, this board is still gonna have to discuss what we're doing with those bathrooms. There was never a plan on who's gonna lock and unlock them. You know, we hired a custodian, but now we're gonna add those buildings, how often, when are they gonna be open? All that stuff is gonna have to be decided.
I would think that they would be used when there's a game or practice down there, right, so.
But people are down there all day long. Are you only gonna open them at night? Then who's gonna open them?
Well, I don't think we can leave them open.
Nope, we can't leave them open.
24 hours, so unless the police wanna patrol down there more, I would say that the coaches and sports managers would have keys so they could open them up, but, I mean, that limits it, but, what's the other option, leave it open all the time? Or lock them all the time?
No, right now, the option was, we were going to hire our compost checkers to lock and unlock them, but we have to figure out, are we talking five days a week, seven days a week, and what time in the morning, till what time at night?
Well, they, if they're used during the day, they should be cleaned every day, so if they send the custodian down there to clean them, he can do that the first thing in the morning and unlock them at that time.
Right, but now you're taking something away from his normal schedule that he already has 40 hours planned for.
He's gotta, he's gotta clean them every day anyway, if he's, if he's gonna be the one that's gonna clean them.
But that was the question, is now, is he gonna be the one to clean them? Those are the things that were never discussed, when we decided to put bathrooms down there. The stuff was never, and then who's gonna lock them at night? And what time are you gonna lock them at night?
Can the police unlock them and lock them during shift change?
I don't know if you really want the police to, I don't know.
I don't wanna put anything else on them anymore than we have to.
But that's just something that we'll need to think about.
Well, I would suggest, myself, that it works somewhat similar to the key to town hall. If the high school baseball team is gonna go down there and play, they stop at the police station, they say, "We need the keys to the bathroom." They get the keys to the bathroom, maybe they have to leave their ID, so we know we're gonna get the key back. They unlock the bathrooms. When their game is done, they lock the bathrooms and return the key.
Right, but now you're limiting those bathrooms to only when teams are down there. What about during the day when kids are at the playground? We're gonna get rid of those porta-potties, what about people using the boat ramp? What about people using for practices? I mean, that's the issue, is now, you know, if you're only gonna restrict it to when people who take out a permit use it?
We don't have to worry about the kids between September and June while they're in school during the day.
Well, you do, little kids. Parents go over there with little kids at the playground all day, you see them out there.
The dog park.
The dog park people are out there.
And that's the time that they use on the boats, boat ramp? You got the dog park.
I mean, it's, it's more actively used than you think, and I just, if we're building bathrooms, I hate to just see them only open when there's a game or a practice down there, because we're spending a lot of money, it's a lot of time, people should be able to, but again, it's just things that we need to think about that were never thought about.
I mean, I don't wanna ask them to do more, but it seems like their schedule coincides with, you know, 7:00 AM shift change, go down there and unlock it, and then the 7, I mean, that's things that have to have them do that, but what other options are there? You're not gonna go down and do it in the morning, and you're not gonna do it in the evening.
Yeah, but you know what? I gotta be honest with you, I think that the five of us, six of us, are smart enough to figure this all out, when and if those bathrooms ever open.
Yeah, no, I just said something we need to think about, I didn't mean tonight, but it's some, those are things that we need to think about, is, again, we now have a custodian that's full-time, but he's now full-time with all the buildings in South Groveland, and to now add something, five days a week to go down in there and clean, my guess is, that's gonna be more messy when it's being actively used. We're taking certain precautions, we're not putting paper towels down there, there're gonna be hand dryers, we're trying to figure out how to deal with the toilet paper, so kids just can't go down there and ruin, you know, throw it all around, I mean, at a public facility, those are the types of things we need to think about. There's a, the lights are on automatic, the fan is on automatic, so at least if the police are driving by and they see the lights on, there's an issue and they can go in and check it, but, you know, I have, I have a fear of someone going down there at night to lock them, that, what if there's someone hanging out in there? You don't know what you're gonna find. I mean, again.
And it's gonna get darker sooner.
We can't put automatic locks, because then they could lock and someone's inside and we wouldn't know that. So, it's just things that we need to think about, that Bob and I have been thinking about and trying to figure out how we're going to deal with them when the time comes, but at some point, we're gonna have to figure that out.
I think we can do it. I'm confident.
Automatic locks, you mean like timer locks?
We have to get out, it's no problem. It's getting in.
Right, but you have to get in. You have to still get in.
You can get out, though, you can always get out.
You gotta get in to use the bathroom.
I mean, in case you think that someone's gonna get stuck. We've gotta lock the door.
Yeah, so, again, just something to think about, but that's, those are things that we now need to figure out what we're gonna do with. Like I said, we've talked to Ed Reed, and he was gonna be one of our point persons to get it, but again, are we talking seven days a week? Are we talking 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM? If you do 8:00 PM, games go on long after that. It's not a consistent, I don't think it would be a consistent schedule, but it's things that we need to figure out, so.
I'm gonna put all my, a lot of, all my time and energy into figuring out this, this conundrum we have.
When and if they get.
I wanna have the plan ready.
Well, we need to have the plan ready. Yeah.
Timer locks. Put a cellphone in there, in case someone gets stuck.
There's public restrooms all across the world. This is a problem that.
Yeah, but they pay for them.
Right, or they have like sanitation departments, or they have full facility departments, or, you know, we have four people on our highway and we have one custodian now, it's just, to now have someone make that part of their daily routine, it's, you know, it's not like five minutes down there, clean them and come back, I mean, now you're talking a couple of hours to go down and clean the different stalls and the, it's just, again.
Pardon the pun, but I smell an opportunity for a new volunteer of the month.
Are you volunteering to do that?
You know?
On the days I work from home, I'll go down and open and close them.
You know?
Opening isn't the problem, we can easily get them open.
If I can get the things open, the volunteer to go down there one day a week.
Well, it's really the locking, opening, I think, is fine, we can certainly have someone open them, maybe the weekends might be tough, but.
Scrubbing bubbles?
Yeah.
It's really the locking that I, you know.
Put up a sign, opens at 8, closes at 8, don't be in here.
And then what?
If you can't read, don't go in.
And then the games are just starting at 7:30 and the bathrooms lock at 8 o'clock?
Well, you can't have a game set at 7:30, cuz there's no lights down there.
The baseball field doesn't have lights?
Baseball field doesn't have lights.
Yeah, but, but, in a month, though, the sun's gonna set at 5:30, so.
Yeah, so again, it's just something we need to think about at the time, as it gets closer, we need to think about these things.
Absolutely. Discussed pretty much a lot of the unfinished business already, so we'll move on, I guess, since Lori Hill says any other items. So we have other items not reasonably anticipated at time of posting. We'll start with you, selectman Wood, you have any?
What was the update on the timing to pave the rest of Main Street by Shanahan Field?
So that won't be for a while, because they are working on sidewalks, they have to do the sidewalks first.
Same, same location?
Gardner.
Up Gardner?
Yes.
Yeah, cuz that's an ankle twister.
Yeah, so they're working on that, so they won't do the finished paving until they, cuz they're gonna do a final coat. Elm Park is tentatively scheduled for Friday night, but we're waiting to hear back a confirmation from the paving.
This Friday night?
We decided to do it at night, given the hassle with rerouting traffic during the day, so, again, right now, it's very tentative for this Friday night, but we're waiting to hear back.
So you did one side of Elm Park, but not the other?
No, it's all milled, they haven't paved.
The main side, not the residence side.
Right, right.
Will that also be done?
No.
No?
No.
Alright, selectman Watson?
I haven't got anything.
Okay, selectmen reports, we'll start with you, selectman Watson, anything to report on the?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Selectman Wood?
I do not have any assignments, other than you asked me to be liaison for the police and fire departments. I don't know if you were joking or if you were serious.
No, you know what, considering the outstanding relationship you seem to have with both the fire and the police department, I think it would be just a natural extension of your natural talents and abilities to, to be that point person between the board and safety departments.
Okay. I get it, though.
I think you work just extremely well with all the individuals and personnel and personalities over there. I believe, from what I understand, they respect you and your opinions as well, so I think it'd be a good marriage.
Okay. I'll take that.
And maybe you can give us a report on once, how that's going?
Yep, well, try to meet with both groups.
Maybe once a month?
Yeah, once a month or something like that.
Every other.
Yeah, every other meeting, okay.
And, you know what, I'm gonna get back to unfinished business, because I wanna talk about two things that just brought into my mind. The personnel package, the employee handbook, where is that going?
So, I was told they're supposed to be meeting right now, and they are hoping to finish all of their recommendations tonight.
So, can we expect to see their rough draft at next meeting, September 4th?
Yeah, I think right now, they were planning to give it to me to go through it and look and see if their recommendations are in line with municipal personnel, but you can, as soon as I get one, you guys can see one. I haven't seen it, I don't even know what's on their plan, so, that's what I was told. I'm not sure if they're meeting, I haven't seen them walk by, but they were planning to meet tonight and finish their recommendations, that's what I was told.
I know this project has died a few times, and I really wanna see this ball carried across the goal line this time. I think getting those, that handbook updated to current real-world environment is important, it makes us more competitive with the other cities and towns, and we're looking for qualified, skilled help, you know, it makes us more attractive, if we have a handbook that's actually up to date. So that's great. Selectmen's reports, I guess it's my turn, we had a meeting last Tuesday, a combined meeting between the high school building committee and the school committee, was it two weeks ago? Both committees voted unanimously to move ahead with project N 3-3-F, or 3 dot 3 dot F, which is the combination middle school, high school, three-floor to be designed and built behind the existing high school.
With an open courtyard versus the box.
Behind, like, where the football field is?
Where the current football field is now. This will lead to the least amount of disruption, disruption to the current student population as the construction is going on, which is always my concern, I didn't want, wanted to make sure we weren't poorly educating a couple of years of students while we're trying to really tremendously educate 50 years of students down the road. Also, the parking and the flow-through of traffic will be much more improved with this design. And then there'll be a, I mean, we'll have a town meeting?
It'll print it out.
On it? Do I have a copy of, holy cow.
What are you talking about?
Oh, I've been there from day one.
Okay.
Yeah.
The taxes and all that for Groveland?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. It's.
The last one.
The last one. N 3 dot 3 dot F. Well.
So the difference between those, just so you know, is the second to the last one is a box with no fresh air and natural light for a lot of the classrooms.
Very few windows.
The final one has an open area, so that almost every single, I think every single room in there will have natural light. That's really the big difference.
91 to 95.
But that's really the big difference, is the natural light.
Yeah, the difference between an open, friendly setting and a prison-like environment, we didn't want children to feel like that.
I'm glad to see you're on.
This is very important to the future of the community, as well as our society. I'm gonna be honest with you, if we don't educate these kids now and treat them right, we will reap.
One of those kids is gonna be sitting here one day.
One of these kids may be President of the United States, hopefully does a better job. Let's see, we'll move right along to correspondence, we have minutes from the July 23rd, 2018, minutes from the August 13th, 2018 executive session, an email from Joe Demore regarding the Clean River Project.
So on that final item, Joe has asked me for a response on what the board wants to do. I don't know if you want to discuss it at an upcoming meeting, if you're, I believe when we left it, we were waiting on them to get back to us, he seems to feel that that's He seems to feel that that's not necessary. I just don't know how you'd like me to respond to him.
Now, let me respond this way. Selectman Watson, you were scheduled to take a tour with them. Did that prove fruitful?
No, it was... The last I heard, they were still waiting on the border health agent. They did schedule a couple of days that we were looking at a tour. It never came to being. The border health agent was not... Were not able to attend, and I haven't heard anything since then.
And I'll be honest on that, I believe there was an interaction in the health department with some members of the Clean River Project, and I don't think the health agent felt comfortable going out in a boat with them. She was going to do her own exploration by walking the shoreline and reviewing things herself.
I think that that was when I had spoken to her the last time, not to put words in her mouth, but I think she was going to give us a letter. She did tour herself some of the shoreline, and was going to give us a letter on what she found.
So, I can follow up with her if she has a report.
If there's an imminent threat to the citizens of the town, we certainly want to be aware of that and respond accordingly. But let's make sure that threat is real and exists before we jump to any conclusions or things of that nature. As we move along, it looks like you're up at bat, finance director's time.
I just had a few quick things for you. The water department work on Route 97 was completed last Friday, so they did the couple of areas that had been damaged by water main breaks last winter. And also, they repaired an additional section that was not the water department's responsibility. He said it was settling around the two gate valve boxes and the fire service shut-off that was done by private work of Kendall Construction and Proya Construction. They were subcontracted. He said that ultimately, they were not responsible, but he felt it was in the best interest of the town to just address that, because it was so close to the repair work they were doing. But he wanted... Tom Cusick wanted to make it known that should something happen to that general area, again, it's not the town's responsibility, but he was out there fixing that patch, so he decided to repair it. And then, I think the only other thing I have is, I had a conversation today with our interim fire chief, and we need to discuss his salary. So, currently, he's being paid on an hourly basis at his captain's hourly rate. He's tracking it, he's submitting it. We started to pay it under the chief's salary line item, because we're not budgeted for a chief anywhere else. He is recommending that he go similarly to the way the prior chief was and just be paid a salary, so whether we take the annual salary and divide it by, you know, 26 or the month, and figure out that and give him that sort of stipend to perform the work. He said it's getting very difficult to track it, track his hours, report it on their system, and to be honest with you, his pay fluctuates because he is paid at a much higher rate than what we were paying the chief, based on his experience and his years. So, he said he would recommend, and I actually would say the same, that we have a better way of understanding what the expense will be in that line item if we just use the current salary and figure out a weekly stipend for it. So, I figured I'd throw that out to you guys.
And just a suggestion, leave out the hours.
Yes.
And just the salary and do the job.
Yes, and that's what he said. He said some weeks, he's working many more hours, other weeks, he's not. He figures this would even out, that if he's just get... Gets a stipend for however many hours he needs to get the job done, it would take care of it.
I agree, and I apologize. I... It really skipped my mind. That should have come up right away. I mean, if the man's doing the job, he should get paid for the job he's doing.
Right, well, again, and he is. He's just getting paid on an hourly basis at his... So, again, for him, it's just the tracking and trying to figure out what's chief work versus what's company reporting versus what's... He's still going to calls, so he felt it was just easier by just having a set salary.
Do we require a motion to make that happen?
Yes, I would say you should, just because we're going to change his pay based on that.
So, I'll make a motion that we change the acting fire chief to the prior chief's salary, effective immediately?
It would be effective September 1.
Effective September...
Actually, oh, look, we might be able to retro it to August, because I don't think he's gotten paid yet for August. They do a monthly payroll submission.
Effective August 1st?
Yeah, let's do August 1st.
Effective August 1st.
Neil, so I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think there's none. All those in favor?
You know, my feeling is, when the time comes to actually hire a fire chief, I think we're going to have to reevaluate that salary line anyways, so we might as well use the funds that we have appropriated for the fire chief or the person who's filling in as the fire chief.
Speaking of that, how is the MRI study going?
It's going... I guess it's going well. I haven't really heard from them much. I did talk to Brian, the manager, principal, owner, whatever he is, last Thursday, maybe. He'd gotten all the information. I'd sent him a bunch of information, and then Chief York compiled a bunch of information. So, they were sent all of that. Their next stop will be the onsite visits. So, I'm waiting to hear. He's assigned an in-house person that will set up a schedule and then come here and start meeting and going through the departments and viewing all their equipment and doing all that. So, I'm just waiting to hear when that will be.
Any idea when that's anticipated to be completed, roughly?
No, I think they expected originally like a six-month turnaround. So, we did give them quite a bit of information, and now they'll start doing the onsite work.
It's moving forward.
It is moving forward, yes.
Anything else on your plate?
There's a blood drive in this room, because we won't meet again, right? So, it is next Thursday, August 20... August 30th, from 1:00 to 6:00. For people that would like to register, there's a link right on our website, or you can go to... Either call 1-800-RED-CROSS, or go to redcrossblood.org and enter Groveland.
Do you know if they'll be doing just the straight blood draw, or they'll be doing the platelet?
No, they do just a straight blood draw here. They don't have enough room to do the platelets.
That's too bad. That's really... You don't feel like anything, put it in one, take it out of one and put it right back in?
Yeah, we did really well at our last blood drive. We had more appointments than we expected, so they're really excited about this one. There's a critical need for blood, so anyone who can give Thursday, August 30th.
Any specific type they're looking for?
No, any type. And that is all I have for you.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Selectmen's time, we'll start with you, Mr. Selectman Wood.
Nothing for selectman time.
Nothing at this meeting.
Okay. I will just say, congratulations to Nolan Ryan O'Neil, who passed his learner's permit test today. All you drivers on the road, watch out. Just one more. One more teen boy going to be driving on the streets. That's never a good thing sometimes.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
That made me think. So, just, school will be opening, you know, coming up soon, I think Tuesday, September 4th, so just be careful on the roads out there. Kids will be out and about again. Buses and walkers will be around, so just be mindful of the school being back open.
I thought they were open a week from Wednesday.
No, after Labor Day.
Yeah, it started after Labor Day. Now, enough of us complained that they were ruining the last good weekend of the summer.
I don't think that did it.
Actually, um, I say one thing?
Yeah.
Before we turn. I noticed on some of the Facebook channels that there's been an excess of trash being dumped around town. Bags, TVs, chairs, recliners. People take pride in your town, just put the trash where it belongs, please.
Is there's dumping it?
Yeah.
Can we fine these people?
We've got to know who it is first.
They do it at night when no one's watching.
And we get charged, because we pick it up and things like mattresses and stuff, we get charged for. So, we're paying to dispose of those things.
You know, when I'm walking or running down there, there's McDonald's bag, beer cans, there's all kinds of crap down there.
If we catch them, is there a fine?
Yes.
How much?
It's a blood drive, it's a beating.
I don't know what the fine is, but there's a civil violation.
Can we increase those fines right now?
I don't know.
That's Jeff.
Yeah, I don't know. I have to talk to the police chief and see what...
Is the jail time involved?
I don't know if it's a standard... No.
Well, it depends on what they're dumping, right?
No, but I will tell you, they take it very seriously. If there's a bag of trash, they will go through it and look to see if they can find out who owns that trash. They take it very seriously when there's trash and stuff. It is, it's mattresses, tires.
Recliners, TVs.
There's everything that's being dumped around.
It's ridiculous.
And maybe to combat that, maybe we should look at next time, a couple of times a year to pick up some of these items like chairs or couches and all the... What we've done in the past, they just threw them in the trash truck. So, maybe... Maybe we need a discussion with this company, that why could another company do it and these guys can't do it?
Well, they can. I've thrown a couple of sofas out, and it's a very easy call. You call Waste Management, you set up an appointment, usually they come by on a Friday, at least in my part of town. You leave it out on the curb, it's, I think, $25, somewhere in that, and that's it. It's presto changer, it's gone.
Yeah, you just... You can't schedule a day, because then you're going to have 45 couches out there.
Right, so I will tell you, Ed, I did speak to them about that, because when we first went to them, we had that question. So, I will tell you two things regarding that and the recycling that people complain about the size and the items that are being recycled and not picked up. Our previous hauler went bankrupt for these reasons. They had to send an additional truck every single week to pick up those bulk items, and they had to cover the cost of that. And the same thing with recycling. They were not charging us for recycling, and those are the two of the main reasons why they went bankrupt.
And this is probably one of the reasons that they're ending up on the side of the road, out in the woods, because they're not being picked up.
Yeah, it's possible, and people don't want to pay to pick it up.
And then the catch-22 situation you run into is, if Groveland picks it up, and you've got a relative that lives in Merrimack, West Newbury, and they bring it to your house, they have you pick it up. So, all got to get on board. All the different towns got to do it.
Maybe we could better educate the citizens out there that there is a vehicle to take care of that kind of trash pickup. It's an easy call. I think it's on the website.
It's right on our front page. Click at the trash and recycling button, it's all right there.
Dumping a sofa on Center Street's not the answer.
But I don't think... I don't think you're getting the fact that it's... Not that they don't know about it, it's the cost. It's the cost. If they can throw it out in the backwoods somewhere, they can do that for nothing. But they don't want to have to pay to have somebody come and pick it up, like you just mentioned. You call, gave $25, you get something picked up.
Well, they paid for the sofa or the chair in the first place.
They're not used to having to pay for it when the other company was doing it at no charge.
I mean, they could even bring it to Mello's right over the line. You know, once it's in their car, they could bring it there, but instead, they're bringing it to the car.
They're putting the effort in to put it in the car.
That's a cost.
Yep, yep.
Well, if they get caught, it's going to cost them a lot more than $25 to get rid of that TV or whatever they're throwing. So, maybe we can step up the patrols and see if we can catch some of these people and make examples out of them. You get a couple of them, I think, we'll do fine.
And if people see it happening, you know, call the police station. Call with the plate number. Like I said, they take it very seriously. The chief takes this... He does not like to see things dumped in town. He will exhaust any option to try and figure out who owns this stuff.
Everybody in town ought to take it seriously, and just about everybody has a smartphone. Take a picture, get some video, you know. No problem prosecuting some of these people. They're full of extent to the law. It's crazy, it's our town to keep it clean. Enough people here work their tails off trying to do that. We don't need anybody trying to spoil it. I guess that's about it for tonight. It looks like we've gone through everything. Does anybody else have any?
Nope.
Are we set?
So, our next meeting is a Tuesday, Tuesday, September 4th.
The day after Labor Day.
It... Oh, actually...
Labor Day is the 3rd.
We can't meet that day, it's the primary. We can't meet on the primary day. So...
It's the primary day.
Yes, that's the primary. So, I guess, what do you want to do, Chair?
It's our vacation you were talking about, beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, we can't meet that day.
Oh, our recess.
Yeah, recess. Groveland's recess.
Groveland's recess. Groveland Buddhist Selectmen recess. We're in recess, we can't do any business.
We could do the 10th. We could do two meetings in a row, the 10th and the 17th.
What?
And skip the 4th if you wanted.
It's my contract, sir.
Contract says you'll work. If you die...
I don't like that contract.
Can we just go the 5th?
The Wednesday, we might be conflicted with the zoning board, who normally meets here on Wednesdays. I have to figure... I don't know, I don't know what their meeting schedule is.
It's usually the first Wednesday.
They took August off, I believe they were going to meet up again, and I can check with them. Right now, I'll be honest, I don't have anything tentative on the agenda, so if you want to move it one way or another, that's fine, but, yeah, I didn't even realize it until just now.
Why don't we move it to the Wednesday of the 5th, then? If there's no... Are they meeting or...
I don't know. I believe Casey told me they were skipping their August meeting, and they were going to start back up in September, which would be the first Wednesday. That's their normal meeting schedule.
So, then we'd go the 10th?